I was getting worried. I thought I was gonna have to call roll. It's all good. I call the October 11th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Ms. Pinyard, will you please call roll?
Gladly. Chair Heberline.
Here.
Here.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Carmen Beddon. Catherine Neal.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Thank you. All right, now let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to citizens' input, this is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. I will add that we will take some time since we have some people here in City Hall that would like to talk about Frog Pond East and South, I'm guessing. We'll open that time up as well.
I have no one raising their hand on Zoom.
Okay. All right, moving on to administrative matters. The September 13th, 2023 meeting, Planning Commission minutes were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. All right, moving into the work session items. Looks like Mr. Polly, you're up first for Frog Pond East and South.
Good evening, Chair Heberline and commissioners. You've had a couple months break from me, but I'm back. Let me share my screen real quick. So again, Dan Polly, City's Planning Manager, and we've been working on this project together for some time now. And we continue our implementation efforts around the Development Code. And this evening, I wanted to, the project team, so besides me, with the city team, we have our engineer, engineering team here, including Kev Rapald and Amy Pepper. And Zach is here too, Zach Weigle, our city engineer, who've been working with me on the stormwater design standards and appreciate their input and support and collaboration as we work through that. So we're going to be giving you an update on two components of the draft Development Code amendments, which are intended to implement the Frog Pond East and South master plan, which was adopted by council back last December. So those are housing variety and stormwater design standards. So let's jump right into housing variety first of all, and then when I get to stormwater standards, I'll have my engineering colleagues come up here as well. I wanted to start by, since it's been February since we really talked about this much, time goes by so fast, but hasn't been sitting on the shelf for me. But I know you probably haven't, didn't spend your summer thinking about this and looking at spreadsheets around these topics like I did, but. So let's do a bit of review. Again, one of the basic ideas around housing variety from the master plan is to have unit categories or buckets. So, and there's four of those. So there's category A, which is apartments or attached multifamily condos apartments. Unit B, which is middle housing, including townhouses and complexes, and also we'd grow that to include the detached equivalent of those or a mix of detached and attached. Category C are cottage clusters, ADUs, and other smaller detached units. And then category D are detached dwellings, single-family lots. That also includes cluster housing where the homes are builder, smaller, or detached multifamily units. And that's kind of a head scratcher for some, but again, that detached multifamily units is where you have larger homes that are all on a shared lot. Prime example of that is on Fur Avenue in Old Town. There's about nine homes there that are larger, too large to be a cottage, but are all on a shared lot and have since been condoized. And then related to that, and we'll talk about is, so we have those four categories of unit types, but then we also have our urban form types that play together. So there's three types of urban forms as have been mapped in the master plan. There's urban form one, which is, has the densest, most urban feel and represented by generally less setbacks and larger buildings. So, and here, consistent with the master plan and kind of listed what, while all unit types are allowed in each of these, out of what we would expect maybe the market and coupled with the minimum unit requirements would probably tend towards. And that includes for urban form one apartments, larger kind of block length apartment or townhouse buildings and closely spaced detached homes. Urban form two, which is kind of middle of the road, you're looking at moderately spaced detached homes, townhouses and complexes. They're more, probably more a four to six plex type. Type and then smaller apartment buildings. I mean, not real small, but maybe a little shorter and more narrow than type one. Type three is where you have the most setbacks and smaller buildings as you talk about width. So this includes things like detached homes, the smaller townhouses and plex buildings, particularly maybe like two-unit, three-unit buildings, cottage clusters, and small apartment buildings. The other key concept is, a key part of these variety standards is having a minimum amount of target unit category. So we talked about this quite a bit through the adoption of the master plan. So this includes middle housing. So these are units that we want to make sure are included in each area or sub-district of the master plan. And this includes middle housing and other, particularly that category C, those cottages. And then the other component is to make sure each of these different areas are not dominated by one land use type. And so having maximum amount of land dedicated to any one unit category. So those are the two main principles there, and we'll kind of touch on that more. And the other key related to that is that it's variety throughout. We talked a lot during the master plan about making sure we're not segregating or pigeonholing different uses in one area, but that they're spread and mixed throughout at a reasonable level. You know, you're not necessarily going to have every other unit be something different for just site planning and functionality. But they're in fairly close proximity. So you feel like you're in a neighborhood that has a variety of housing types. So you're not just, I'm in a single-family area or a townhouse area or something like that. Because the master plan talks about encouraging block level variety or having a similar, where again, it is maybe not everything on every block, but there's a fairly fine level of variety. So with that in mind, what we've been up to these last number of months is really modeling. We talked about the standards back in February and March earlier this year. And since these are some novel approaches to addressing this, where, you know, in Vilbo, for example, I mean, we drew this map and we put every, every of the 13 different unit types, we mapped that specific unit type of where it was going to be and added and allowed a little bit of variation. So this is approach where essentially we allow it everywhere and allow, we want that variety, but we added in some flexibility to put it in different places. So with a novel approach, we want to do a lot of tests and make sure we get it right. Because we don't want to be back here talking to you about it in 2025 and 2026 to fix something that we messed up, right? So we've been doing that. We brought on, certainly West Hills has been looking at it some and giving us some good feedback. We've also had our urban designers we worked with throughout the master plan also modeling and kind of trying to break our code to see if it works. And and through that, we've kind of come up and plus in-house, we've looked at and done spreadsheets and drawings and really thinking through this and being very thoughtful. And some elements that we continue to explore that I wanted to share with you and see if you have any comments on here in a bit is, first of all, that there's different rates per unit with land consumption. So when you start saying, you know, so you have to be mindful that a single-family house takes up more land than a apartment. So when you start putting percentages, you have to be aware of that, otherwise it can really get thrown off. And also, whenever you're working with density or numbers or percentages, there's a relationship with citing and design standards. So building with any lot size all obviously interrelate to that. So we want to make sure that all those different standards and layers, first of all, work together. And also identify places where maybe the overlapping standards aren't necessary and we can simplify. And the master plan didn't give us a certain percentage of what's the right max to prevent one category from dominating a sub-district. So we've wanted to continue to look at that. Kind of the assumption is, well, if you have more than half, then you have a majority and you're starting to dominate. As explained in the staff report, 50% may not be a great option though, because you start running into some math problems. If you have two products, they're both 50% and there's some, and it reduces the flexibility that may be desired. So right now, and as we continue to test and look at the work that MIG has done, sorry, and Walker Macy, that 60% seems to be working is, it allows, it allows a lot of variety, but at the same time, it doesn't allow it to really dominate an area. One area that we're conscious of, when you have min and max, whenever you encode our requirements, when you have a min and max, you gotta be, if they don't add up to 100%, you kind of like, okay, what about that, those gap units? What happens with those? And does it lead to unintended consequences or requirements? Particularly, does it mean that we're actually requiring more middle housing or other categories unintentionally when otherwise the requirements around minimum unit, number of units and market conditions would push towards something else? So we're artificially pushing something that we're not intending to. A brief update, I mean, this will be a continued conversation, but as we've begun looking at it, generally I'm seeing that it is actually working out okay. That because of, and this, and when I say this, I'm talking, we have, we've kind of mocked up and tested the code where it's the minimum number of units possible in order to still meet the metro condition of approval. So kind of the minimum number of units and see if it works at that level. And it does, that just those requirements, number of units, as we talked about during the master plan, just those minimum required number of units is going to push some variety. Because you need to do some variety just to get those number of units on that amount of land. And so with that requirement coupled with any, that it doesn't really create anything that's greatly out of sync with the other requirements by having these gap units right now. So that's promising, but we're going to continue to look closely at that and test that to make sure we're not doing something we don't intend to do. Or something that causes an issue for the market or other requirements. There's something else.
Can I pause for a second? I want to make sure the commission is following what the gap units are and what Mr. Polly is describing here. I feel like I have a couple looks of inquisition among my commissioners. So if there are questions, I would say, let's take a pause and have you ask, and maybe, Dan, you could clarify what those gap units are again.
You are perceptive. But I'm not even sure how to formulate my question, but it sounds like, I'll repeat what I think it is and then you can correct me. So if it's, if it's a conflict between the maximum of one type and the minimum of another, it's the difference between those, like what fills the area in the middle? Is that?
Right. So to use precise numbers, let's say, you're, 25% of your units have to be a certain thing, right? It has to either be middle housing or, or other. And then you, let's assume that the developer is pushing for the rest to be detached homes. But the maximum of detached homes plus that minimum 25% requirement doesn't necessarily add up to 100%. So there are some units that don't either, can't be the maximum, can't be the part of that maximum and aren't required to be part of the minimum. So what happens to those units that kind of, undesignated units, if you would? They're kind of undesigned units, if you would.
And are you saying that the developer has the choice to put whatever they want in that gap? Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily. And that's, that's really what we're testing, because the, the concept is that they do have choices with those gap units. But ours, there is the way the standard's written, unintentionally requires some, those gap units to be something.
So, Dan, maybe it would be helpful if you went back a couple slides to, I think it's the four different types, or four different categories.
Unit categories.
Yeah. And so, so this is where we would be putting the min's and maxes. We would be saying, a maximum of X percent of unit category D and a minimum of unit category, we'll call it B, which means that if you're, if you've met the minimum for B and you've got your maximum at D, you have to fill it with A or C.
Or your minimum is not truly a minimum and you have to put more category B.
Right.
Trying to get rid of ambiguity, is basically what we're trying to do.
Well, I think, yeah, I think it's more of a, we're trying to test the code to understand if we're unintentionally pushing something in addition to the minimums that we're setting, knowing that we're also placing a maximum on any housing type, right? So it's not just a maximum on unit category D, it's a maximum of any unit type should be 60% of the, of, and so what we're testing is to see, like, are we inherently making, let's just use 60% and 25% now, so now we're at 85. Are we inherently requiring a specific housing type in that 15%? Because what we, if, if we are, and we're essentially saying, well, your minimum's really not 25%, it's 40%, then we're not providing any flexibility to the developer. And so that's part of what we want to test with the code is to make sure that there is still some flexibility for a variety of housing types beyond just the minimum thresholds that we want to see in the area.
And what we're tending to see is that things like minimum unit count and just proximity to other unit types and kind of site planning will tend to resolve this issue on its own, but we'll continue to be very cautious of it and see, indeed, if that holds true as we test different scenarios. Now, this is, this gets into the weeds of it, but...
I won't ask you to pull up one of your spreadsheets, but I want to.
And interrelated with this a bit, but is a continued discussion that I'm sure you may hear from West Hills as well, is what is the right geographic scale to measure the min and max? And is there a case to measure it at a larger scale? Because really, the default is to measure this at the sub-district, the smaller of sub-district or development. And the reason for that is the master plan directs sub-district or tax lot level. There's that, that language is actually in the master plan. And also, we want to get, encourage the block-level variety without necessarily requiring, like, that a block-level variety in, in precise language, saying that each block has to have three different housing types or something, right? We don't necessarily want to go there and, because that can create some site planning issues and such. But also, we want to measure and require the variety at a small enough scale that you're not having multiple blocks of the same product right next to each other. And really, where staff is at and recommends at this point is that, for most part, in, in what we've seen from our development partners as potential layouts and from the testing that Walker Macy has done, that this, at sub-district or tax lot level tends to work. And so we're looking for areas that it doesn't work. And so probably, I would say that the tendency now is to keep it at that smaller area, but maybe write in some exceptions where really there's a specific scenario where it just doesn't work for, for parcel size reasons or other factors.
I would think we'd want to write it in such a way that it allows for those exceptions for this, I mean, we're thinking more south, right? Where there's all those individual tax lots and we don't want to put an onerous burden on one tax owner because they do the development first. I mean, that's what our original discussion was about. So how do we modify the code to account for those exceptions and make it easier for us at a global level to say, okay, here's, here's what we want, and then here's these exceptions?
Yes, sir. So some of those smaller developments in south is one case, but we're also even seeing in, in east that, because some of the geographies and like, there's a big wetland, or, you know, even that sub-district that has the mixed use in it, it gets more difficult because that's broken up so much by wetland and other tax lots and the mixed use, that it makes it more difficult to work. So, so we're really trying to find what is the right balance there and continuing to kind of look at different options and, and resolve those issues, so.
Is it possible to write the code in more generic fashion, allow for exceptions, then those exceptions are discussed at a later date? Or are we trying to literally account for all these different exceptions?
I think it's a balance there. Good question. So certainly, the, the code does, is drafted for, you know, to take a discretionary path if needed. Say, you know, this doesn't work, we're going to go this discretionary path. But also where it's, you know, two or three, or one or two known exceptions that are fairly straightforward, that could probably easily be written into the code so they don't have to artificially go through a discretionary process later. So one other area that I wanted to touch on, and I know we're, we're getting short on time here, but this one's different than what we talked about before. So overall, we talked about percentages, and there was an assumption when we talked about the variety standards before, that they'd be applied evenly around each sub-district, essentially. But as we looked at that, is certainly some sub-districts have more urban Form 1 or more urban Form 3, which change the type of product and the density that would be expected there. And, and when you start looking at the minimum unit count, that has a relationship with the different urban forms. So we wanted to look at, does it make sense to vary those requirements slightly to be more in sync with those, with, with the mapped urban form and the minimum number of units required? And as we've looked at it, it starts to make sense. And we're not talking maybe like 2.5% modification, up to maybe 5% modification from like a base 20%, where still overall, the whole master plan balances out to 20%, but you'll have a bit more of the required units in an area that's all urban Form 1 and urban Form 2 than an area that's, you know, 75% urban Form 3, which would be a lower density by nature anyway because of setbacks and those design standards. So I think that's the simple way to, to, to explain that, so, and you've had that in your staff report, so any clarifications I can offer on kind of what the intent of doing these variations would be?
I have a question, but I'm worried that it's going to suck us down into the weeds, so.
I won't go too far into the weeds.
You made a phrase that perked, that caught my attention. You said, "The metro requirements of approval." Can you high-level give us a sense of what the metro requirements for approval are?
Yeah. So a condition of the UGB expansion back in 2018 was that there was a minimum of 1,325 units. And so as we've modeled this, you know, we assume 125 of those units would likely be in the mixed use on Brisbane, so then taking 1,200 units and spreading those out across the rest of the master plan is what our assumption is. So to add up to that minimum of 1,325.
Okay.
And I would just note that that number from metro that was included in the ordinance originated from the Frog Pond area plan and what the Frog Pond area plan estimated for east and south.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that, I'll shift to the questions, which really point on your thoughts on some of these specifics we mentioned about, including the measuring the variety requirements at different scales, if 60% as the max limit makes sense, and that concept of variation based on the amount of different urban form types, and any other comments you have. And then we can get into the stormwater standards.
Okay.
Oh.
Go for it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I am leaning towards being supportive of the 60% max limit and then also the variation. I'm curious to hear what others thinks on the, the larger scale of the sub-districts. I'm quite sure of that.
By that, do we mean just a larger scale than sub-district or within sub-district and then within the larger?
So you could pick and choose. So you could, you know, one concept is to maybe measure minimum by sub-district and then do maximum across a larger geography, or, or the opposite of that. I mean, you could do, you kind of really, but the intent is however you do it, you want to make sure that there is still that good level of variety within each sub-district.
Right. But if you're measuring it at a lower level, the lower level you measure it, the more you're going to guarantee, at a higher level, you're going to get the same thing. Right? So if your, if your concern is for variety, without making it too onerous on the builders, the lower the level, you have to have the variety, the more complete the development will be to have variety. But is, it seems to me that the sub-district is, because how many do we have? Nine sub-districts?
Yes.
And what's the smallest sub-district?
The smallest sub, so generally, they're, they're about the same area. The smallest one is Sub-District S1, and I want to say about five acres, but that one's oddball because it's just one property that's completely surrounded by streets, and that one would have special provisions, because certainly it scales, some of the variety requirements scale based on the size of development for feasibility purposes.
Yeah. So I'm thinking sub-district is, again, if we measure it at the sub-district level, then at a larger level, it's going to have that same variety. I'm definitely in favor of the 60%. I think that seems to, to make sense, and, yeah, the more variation we can have in the urban forms, the better. Gives them more options than the developer.
So rather than answer the specific questions, I'm going to generically answer them. The more I'm reading the news and learning about how more people are falling into homelessness than they're coming out of it on a monthly basis and how the problem's just festering, I feel like we as a community need to do all we can to increase the amount of affordable middle housing available to the community. There's a lot of people struggling with rent and, and housing costs here locally in Wilsonville. So, so I think whatever mixture achieves a goal of quantity of units and lower costs is my priority because of the crisis.
I kind of echo her, but I know that developers do need a little bit of flexibility in order to be profitable, I guess. So, so there is a required number of homes per subdivision, right? Or sub?
Right. A minimum.
At a minimum. So if they use 60% of their land or their unit, single dwelling, then, then I believe that that, that gap should be more in the middle housing cluster type of homes and not be in the larger townhomes. That's my thought.
So from a variety at a larger scale than the sub-district, I'm having trouble seeing how that would be practical. I'm just not seeing how, how we can force variety when we have such a, a broken, a segmented development. You know, this isn't Villebois where we can identify exactly where, what goes where. And, and there, it makes complete sense. We know exactly what we're going to do. We can define it down to the house. But in these, where you have so many different property owners and the development's going to happen in such a, I hate to say haphazard fashion, but, you know, it's going to be entirely dependent on, on who sells and the developers and, and all of that. So I just, I don't know how you, how we could write it in a way that would, that would function at, at a larger level. I just, I don't know. And maybe we can, and that'd be great. I'd love to see it. I just, I'm having trouble visualizing right now.
I think there'd be, like, for example, like, what West Hills may develop, it goes, so it'd be that case of probably east where you may have a developer that develops across multiple sub-districts.
Yeah. Yeah. On the 60% max limit on a single unit category, I think it's okay, but I'd love to see some numbers that would justify that it's okay. I mean, right now, without seeing, okay, what are, what are some of the, the examples that that would look like? Because likely, we're talking 60% single-family. I mean, let's...
Not necessarily. You will probably see some 60% middle housing and some 60% apartments, based on some of the models and ideas that I've seen floated, so.
Okay.
So are the models hard to share?
They're just not quite ripe. I think they, it gives some good information, but also it gives some information that's not accurate. Does it really reflect a preference or direction we're headed?
So I think, to further clarify, essentially, staff has just seen first drafts.
Yeah.
And we're starting to see what issues pop up. And so one of the things that we're trying to work through is like, okay, so how do we resolve those issues? And we'll bring some of that back to you in December. And I think when we do bring that back to you, we can also share like example site plans of, of the whole area, master, master plan area. To be able to show not necessarily exactly what we want to see, but demonstrations of here would be the result of the code. And I think what our hope is, is we'd have some variety there, show you something like if somebody did the minimum density versus if somebody were to maximize density or something in between. And we don't know exactly what, how many alternatives we'll have to share, but we'll at least share something with you to give you a sense of like how the standards are shaking out in terms of what it could look like, and that if we have looked at refinements, then presenting to you here are suggested refinements in order to resolve any complications of inputting all of these things together.
I think that'll help a lot. I mean, being able to visualize what these numbers would look like is going to be a lot easier.
Yeah. I mean, that's why we're doing the testing, so we can visualize and understand. So, and we look forward to sharing that with you. But, well, we're still working on it. We wanted to provide some update and know that we haven't forgotten about it.
We know.
So what I think you're hearing, Dan, is that the commission, if I can summarize, is comfortable with us testing the 60%?
Yes.
Or something that's, you know, between 50 and 60? Because I think the point is, is that a lot of times you get to that 50. If we limit it to 50 exactly, then you're potentially in the situation of like, somebody might get bumped over to like 51%, and then what do you do? And so it's providing that additional flexibility at this point, but we'll test it and we can bring it back to you so you can see what it looks like.
That's good.
Okay. So if it's all right, let's jump into stormwater, which will be a shorter conversation than what we just talked about, housing variety, I think.
Got a question. Got a question.
When do we, I mean, would it be logical to do the comment?
I mean, typically what we've done is public comments received at the end of the work session item, when we've done it with a work session. And so Dan would go through the stormwater and you'd have an opportunity to provide comment on both at the same time, but this is up to the discretion of the chair and the commission and what they would prefer to do and how you'd like to handle the public comment.
Yeah, I'd say let's go ahead and roll through the entire presentation.
Okay. And invite Amy and Carrie if you'd like to come up and so you can add commentary as I work through this.
Here's Mary.
Thanks, Carrie. All right, so review of the stormwater. So we, this is a little bit more fresh. We talked about this back in July with the planning commission. So we review kind of what we're trying to do. We want to be on the same page with the development community about what we're trying to do as we, so what we've added to the code really is a purpose statement that emphasizes that low impact development is required, which means you're seeing it's functioning as close to pre-development as practicable. Another component that we've kind of clarified in this version is encouraging minimizing impervious surfaces. So rather than, for example, having green roofs as part of the kind of list of priorities, it just essentially states it as you're calculating your impervious surface that, to encourage you to reduce that by using green roofs or pervious pavement and such. The key then becomes setting a clear prioritization of where stormwater facilities should be located. And then those, sometimes other things want to go in that same place, so identifying those conflicting design elements and uses and when we, you know, put a light pole or a street tree there versus a stormwater facility. And also being clear that when there needs to be exceptions or waivers, that that's under the authority of the city engineer and what factors the city engineer should be considering when looking at those waivers. So the main update then, since our last storm, our last time in July, is around this concept of ensuring that it's decentralized and that it's throughout the development, it's not just all in one location or hidden underground. So prior, we had on top of those lists of prioritized locations and conflicting uses, we also had a number or size limitation where it said, you know, no more than X% of the stormwater, I think it was 20% of the stormwater from a basin could go to one facility. We've also toyed with the idea, which I think apparently is still included in your staff report, of putting a minimum, a maximum size of each facility. But what we've gone towards is only location prioritization because as we've looked at it, we've talked to our development partners and thought through it, really because of these locations that are prioritized are by their nature throughout the development, that we're already getting with just that one set of standards, already getting towards what we're trying to get of having it spread throughout the development. So it's really ends up not being necessary to add another layer of maximum number or size of facilities. So Carrie, anything to add?
Yeah, I think this is, you know, kind of a unique process we're going through here. I think it'll be, you know, very useful to other jurisdictions because the problem is that you require low impact development, but without really like clear and objective standards like this, it's difficult to, you know, have somebody present something to you and say, hey, I went through this process of looking at these. Because in many respects, we've had a number of, you know, projects where they submit something and we say, well, that's not really integrated and decentralized, but we really didn't give them direction in terms of, well, where should the considerations be in terms of a development site? So I think it, you know, what we're doing here is really important and I think it's something that, you know, is really going to allow for a better discussion when we're working with, you know, the various development sites in the community and gives more certainty in terms of the process.
Thanks, Carrie. Sure. So I have a couple of questions here, but first, any clarification on the stormwater and what we're trying to do here? And then if you'd like to answer either or both these questions or ask any other questions that you may have.
So how are we determining the location prioritization? How did we come up with the list that we have or? Yeah, how do we do that determination? Well, as far as creating the list that we've, you know, put together, they're the locations that, you know, are the most likely to be used in terms of having stormwater facilities. And, you know, they lend themselves to, you know, to having them more readily placed in those locations. So the list is really, it's not based on like, you know, you start at this one, this is the most important. They're all really equally important in that high priority. And, you know, it's just a, it's a means of working, you know, through the development site in terms of like, where can I place these? You know, the right-of-way, these, you know, curb extensions, these maybe remnant pieces that, you know, could be used for something. So they're just, you know, based on experience in terms of, you know, other sites that we've worked with and where it's most likely, you know, to work in terms of placing a facility.
Then when you're actually reviewing a development or engineers designing it, essentially go through this list like a checklist. It's like, oh yeah, that area exists. Is that enough room to put in a facility?
Because we've kind of gradually, well, kind of rapidly moved from a position where at one point we were just encouraging, you know, low impact development, but now through our MPDS MS4 permit, the city has to comply with. You know, it's a requirement that LID be incorporated into development sites. So we're just trying to, you know, find the best means possible to make that happen. What's the side effect of removing the, what was it? The size and the quantity? I mean, if you're specifying the locations, what will dictate the size of each of those locations? The development going around it or?
Right, the constraints around it generally, but then if you've maxed out any of those high priority and there just isn't enough land, it does give the flexibility to have a larger single facility if that's really ends up being the only option that's left.
So it gives us more flexibility by only having locations? Right. I think so, yeah. It was problematic to trying to establish a percentage that actually would work. And so this just makes more sense in terms of how we require it. Okay, I'm fine with removing it. Yeah.
I don't have any concerns. I agree with it.
So what I'm struggling with is, is from a code perspective, how do we drive? So we identify high priority and lower priority, but what prevents, what realistically prevents the developer from defaulting to the lower priority?
Because essentially if we look at a site plan and we see all these, these planter strips that aren't next to parking, that are just grass, or we see no stormwater around the edges of a park, or no, the kind of the rim net oddball pieces at the end of the block are just like left as grass with, you know, we, you can look at a site plan and see where these locations are and recognize pretty readily that they're not being, they're not being used as stormwater as dictated by these standards, that they're not using it. So it works and we've even tested, looked at some site plans and walked through like, okay, yeah, we've looked at this, there's this type of facility. So as we've tested it, it seems to work in that manner.
Okay, so from a practical perspective, an applicant would submit a plan, staff would look at it and say, nope, 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 all these areas should be stormwater based on our prioritization in the code. So what if they come back and say, okay, we don't want to do that?
Well, we always have the prerogative of saying that it doesn't meet our standards.
Okay.
And so you have to try again. And, you know, the expectation is that they would give us some type of accounting of how they've gone through those priority locations and describe, you know, why they used them, why they didn't use those. And we would expect to see something in terms of, you know, that explanation, that description.
Okay.
Is there enough information in the code for them to make a reasonable first pass? I think so. Is that what you've given them? Yeah, Dan said, you know, we've had discussions about sites, proposed sites and looked at it and literally walked through each one of those and discussed in detail, like, you know, you know, place it in the right-of-way, place it in these remnant pieces and walk through that whole priority list. And, you know, I think it'll work well in that respect.
So it appears in my walk around Frog Pond West that it looks like two of the developments that are in progress have some pretty large stormwater facilities. Those would fall into this lower priority 2B as a separate landscape tract for stormwater facilities?
Yes.
If this were, had been in place at the time?
Yeah, I'd say Frog, you know, some of the sites in Frog Pond West were certainly a catalyst for what we've tried to develop with this.
Yeah.
And we ran into those obstacles of saying, hey, you got to do low impact development. They would give us something and then it would be this back and forth without any clear, you know, an objective way of looking at it. So we've learned from Frog Pond West certainly.
Okay. Yeah, because I, as walking around that, those, there are two stormwater facilities that are quite large and very close in proximity to each other. And it was surprising once I saw it come in and see how close it was together. So it was interesting to see this.
I understand the need to provide clear prioritization and I agree with that, but I don't know that I'm fully convinced that these priorities, as in chapter what E, whatever that is, some of those just don't seem like they would take precedence over stormwater, but that's just my feeling. Like street trees, for example, you know, with, that's just one, as well as some of the minimum open space. If we're serious about managing our stormwater in a disaggregated manner, that we might have to relook at these priorities because I think we're saying two different things.
Yeah, it is a balance and we've tried to put the language in there that essentially says if there's no other locations for them, then they can take priority. So I think that's an important component of that language down there is that if, you know, if you literally, I mean, for example, if you can meet your minimum open space somewhere or I think more simply put, if you can put a fire hydrant, you know, just slightly where it's not going to stop a large stormwater facility, then we should move the fire hydrant. But if literally there's, you're so space constrained, you have a building here, sidewalk, street, and you need a fire hydrant at that location, the fire hydrant's going to take precedent. Similar with street trees because we've gone through this a lot in various projects because street trees cannot be in stormwater facilities simply because you have to replace that media over time. So you'd just be digging up the street tree and they wouldn't be able to mature and provide that canopy coverage, which is important in stormwater and all sorts of reasons. So if you can put a street tree somewhere, if there's enough room to put it like behind a sidewalk or somehow design it where you provide more space for stormwater, then we're going to do that. But if literally, you know, there's 90 feet and there's nowhere to put a street tree except where it would otherwise be stormwater, then you're going to create probably a mound within there to put a street tree so you can, so you can have both of those, how to balance all the competing interests for one little amount of land.
And urban canopy, street trees are really part of our stormwater management system. They intercept that rain, you know, they allow it to disperse in a way that if that was just, you know, grass or something else, it's, you know, it's not quite as effective. So we actually give a credit for street trees or trees within our stormwater standards. So, you know, I think that one is pretty understandable in terms of reaching that balance.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
Sure.
In general, I'm just again in favor of trying to keep development costs low so that way we can get more affordable housing out there on the market.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. And Carrie, we did have something in the chat and because, I mean, I think most of our commissioners understand what LID is from past conversations, but there may be people listening that don't understand what LID is. So do you want to give a 30-second spiel about?
Yeah, very quickly. So really what low impact development and it's also referred to as green infrastructure, it's really trying to replicate or mimic like the way, you know, things would have been prior to development. And so, you know, the best way to manage stormwater is not to concentrate it, not to put it into pipes, is to disperse it. And, you know, if you've walked anywhere that's, you know, a natural area, forest, a prairie, a meadow, you know, that water doesn't get concentrated. It just falls out of the sky and infiltrates and, you know, some of it does run off as sheet flow, but, so to the extent possible, we're trying to mimic that and we're trying to do something that's more reflective of that. And, you know, to capture the runoff as close to where it's occurring, whether it's coming off a street or a roof or a parking lot, we try to, you know, intercept that in these facilities and not put it into a pipe system that takes, you know, into a big pond somewhere that's out of sight, out of mind, that kind of approach. So it's very much, you know, a different approach in terms of really trying just to mimic what nature does.
Thanks, Carrie.
Yeah, thanks. So that concludes what I have for Frog Pond as a presentation. So thank you for your time.
Yep. And so I think we've got a couple of people that would like to speak on the matter. All right, since Dan's was on top, I'll go with Dan first, if you would like.
I would defer.
You would defer to Mimi. All right, Mimi, come on up.
My name is Mimi Dukas with AKS Engineering. I hope you've all had a good summer, but we're back again. We have been working behind the scenes, as you know, with staff trying to think through some of these proposed regulations and we appreciate the dialogue that's been happening. These are probably fuzzy concepts to hear in the abstract. For, to help refresh your memories, we're handing out copies of our current schematic site plan. Fundamentally, I think the primary issue that we have concerns with is the ability to achieve the variety standards across the entire stage one master plan area instead of by subdistrict. So West Hills is involved with AZAR property. It's one of the largest, I believe it is the largest piece of property within the planning district. So our situation is different from what I think you're mentally going through for the properties to the south. It's kind of the opposite situation. And so the current thought is to require variety across each subdistrict. I understand that theory, but we're struggling with it in a few regards. And frankly, from a public outcome standpoint, I think you want to achieve that variety across the planning area. I don't know that it's critical to achieve it by subarea, particularly if you've got it block variety standards to make sure you don't end up with a monochromatic development. What you'll see on our plan is that we've got multifamily located along the western edge. Multifamily, just like every type of development, multifamily has parameters to it that are pretty unique in that you don't see a single apartment building floating out in the middle of a neighborhood. They're typically developed by commercial developers. They typically want 200 dwelling units per development. That's what it takes to have proper amenities, to have proper management, to be able to have a marketable project in the future if you want to sell it to another commercial real estate group. So there's a certain amount of mass that goes into a multifamily development. If we had to achieve the multifamily in the middle subdistrict, it would be one or two apartment buildings sort of floating out in space and that's not how the real estate market works. market works. So that's one housing type that does not want to be dispersed across the whole district. So we can achieve the mix of categories across the entire Stage 1 planning area, and we can do that in a pretty comfortable way. We can do that in a way that creates good urban design, it provides good block level variety, but it matches the market. And I think that's, one of our big concerns is with the goals and policies that you're trying to achieve, how does it align with the marketplace so that we actually have development that can move forward and sell homes and build apartments and bring people to Wilsonville? You know, there's a balance point in there. So if we could achieve those variety standards across the whole Stage 1 master plan, then we can achieve some of the things that we're trying to accomplish in the sketch that's before you, which we think is a quality sketch. It's got the placemaking, things like that. So that's really our primary take-home message for the policies that are being talked about. We can probably deal with the rest of the metrics, the 60%, the different categories. The middle housing category is a struggle. It's not as tested in the marketplace. It's not as commercially viable. But we've got a way to get there. We've got some ADUs that we're incorporating. The attached housing, we can do all day long, townhomes, as long as we can disperse them across the Stage 1 master plan. So that's really fundamentally our main struggle is there, the site planning, particularly for multifamily, just has some particular constraints to it. In regards to stormwater, I think for the commissioners that have talked about the affordability and making sure that we're maximizing the output of this district, stormwater is really important. The more facilities we have, the more we spread them across the district, the costs go up, the efficiency goes down, and the land devoted to stormwater goes up, the cost that gets spread across to the homes ultimately. For the AZAR site, you can see that we've got the BPA power lines. That's a fantastic place to put stormwater in a super-efficient way that preserves the buildable land within the district. I believe the way the language is currently proposed, it's going to make it very hard for us to propose that type of facility. And that's a really perfect opportunity for an efficient stormwater facility. The other place that we have stormwater is next to the wetland on the southwest corner of the site. Next to a wetland, we can do a facility that mimics that wetland, has visual appeal like a wetland, and again, has the scale to be efficient, lower management, lower maintenance, and the right location. Wetlands are typically where stormwater wants to go because it's the low spots. So those are our concerns with the stormwater. So it feels like the stormwater is a one-size-fits-all kind of approach. I know it's got the priorities, but it seems to be excluding these opportunities for efficiency that we think is in everybody's best interest. So those are, that's my feedback. Do you have any questions for me? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for providing the diagram. It's really helpful.
Yep. Dan, any staff comments?
I would just say that, I mean, Dan may have more comments, but I was going to say that we may want to have time to review this in conjunction with the site plans that we're reviewing and testing against the standards, and that we could provide some, I guess, responses to the information that was received tonight when we provide that information to you in December. So we could do that at the same time, if that's helpful.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. One thing that was coming into my head, I know when we were, was it last year that we did a work session where we had some more, some longer dedicated time to work through stuff? I'm wondering if some of these conversations might benefit from a little more time to get into the details and really be able to work through some of this stuff. So something for staff to think about.
Okay. The only comment, I agree with that, and that we have looked at this or similar site plans and have kept that in mind if we've been testing. So I think it makes sense to bring back and kind of test some of these things they're saying. I appreciate their feedback and their continued collaboration. I just want to make the record clear on one point. I think Mimi's intention was, she said middle housing, but she meant cottage clusters were not as tested in the marketplace. Townhouses more are. So, yeah, I think that was the intention.
Great. Thank you. All right, a little bit past 30 minutes, but who's counting?
Sorry.
All right, next up looks like Stormwater System Master Plan with Mr. Rappel.
Oh, sorry.
Dan, did you have something in addition?
I'll be on my best behavior. I realize that's why you tried to cut me off, but I will be good. I'm kidding. So Dan Grimberg, West Hills Land Development. I just want to say we're very much want to be part of Wilsonville and the Frog Pond East and South. We've been a big partner with the city in producing housing. The Frog Pond East and South has been very difficult because there's a lot of new concepts, and they're not necessarily tested. And I've been doing this a long time, and this might be the last one. But anyway, we, as a builder-developer, we build to a market. We don't create the market, right? So whatever we do has got to be market acceptable. And some of the ideas that are being talked about, and I'm not trying to cause problems, are not tested. And so you're talking about big investments, and maybe it works, maybe it doesn't. That doesn't work in development. It just doesn't work. So what we have tried to do from day one, and if you look at this plan, it's identified as Site Plan Number 30. So we've been working at this a year, and we've had a number of meetings with the city, and the city would say, what about this? What about ADUs? What about townhomes? What about small lot? What about alley load? And what you see here in this plan is a plan that's been developed over discussions with the city. So we didn't really review the plan in detail, which I really would like to suggest, but, I mean, we have primarily, we have all the variety of housing. We have small, single-family, little bit larger, single-family. We have three-story townhomes. We have alley-loaded townhomes. We have front-loaded townhomes. We have apartments. We have mixed use. We have it all, and we only have 55 acres. That's a lot going on in 55 acres. So there's a lot of different price points. That's a lot of different buyers, but we can only do so much. And we're really trying hard to make this work, but we need some flexibility. So what I really think, sitting here, you know, should it be 60%? Should the other category be 17.5%? Should it be 25%? It's like, what's it look like? That's what we're trying to show you, and that's what's important to us. What's the community going to look like? How's it going to live? Who's going to live there? Is there a market? I mean, that's what we've been testing. Every day we're working on this, and we think that's a good plan. And what I think would be really productive for everyone is to have, whatever time you've got, if it's a half hour, we'll take it. If it's an hour, that'd be better, and really explain this plan and why we think it works. I think you'd learn about the code. I think you'd learn about this development plan. I think we'd learn what you're concerned about. I think it'd be very productive. And I know that's hard because you're busy and you've got an agenda and all that, but I think that's really what this project needs, is some good back and forth, because it's just not available or doesn't work to stand up at the end of a meeting and say, could I say something? I mean, it's just, it doesn't work. Anyway, that's all I would say, and we are excited to be part of it. The other thing, I will add one more thing. We are very concerned about the cost of housing also. And a lot of these policies, that's not a big concern of what's it going to cost to do this. So Mimi mentioned the pond situation, what are the size of the ponds? If they would be dispersed throughout? That can affect the availability of land for development, which affects the cost of housing. And we did one, we did test the code on an earlier version, and we lost 15% of the density. That's a big hit. That doesn't work. And so I think the staff, in response to that, did remove that condition, but then they also said that they don't want, even if we do all the low-impact development, they don't want to see any large ponds. And I'm not sure what large pond means, but that's a normal treatment. And that's done anywhere in the metro area. That's a normal treatment. You've got to have some of that. You can do low-impact development, but you got to have some ponds. And does it matter if they're dispersed or a large pond? I mean, we've gone through this in other jurisdictions. They went from the small ponds and went to large ponds because they were more efficient, they were better water quality, easier to manage, lower maintenance costs, and now here we're going the other direction. And it does cost money, which adds to the cost of housing. And that's it for me tonight. So I appreciate your time, and I would really offer to meet with you. We would do anything to make that happen. I think it would be very helpful for all of us. So thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it.
So can I ask a question to that effect?
Sure.
What is the policy on going through a work session like that with one of the developers to see how these policies are laying out in real, in at least two dimensions?
There's no standard policy or procedure around it. Staff has been meeting regularly with different members of the West Hills team. So I know we've had several meetings with Dan and Mimi. I know that the engineering team has had meetings with their engineers to discuss different stormwater policies. So there has been, there have been a lot of discussions from, between staff and their team and the, well, the developer has an option on the property, I almost said property owner, but technically that's not happened. So anyway, so we have been meeting with them regularly to discuss these different things, and which is in part why we're testing the different layers of code. We heard, and this takes time, so we heard, you know, months ago from comment during meetings like this and offline staff with the team, there were concerns around certain standards, certain housing types, those percentages, how different lot standards like a minimum lot size intersects with all of this? Do you need that if you already have minimum density and urban form types that are looking at design, plus these minimum dense, minimum middle housing standards? So when you start layering all those things on top of each other, what are the potential outcomes of that? And part of this is because we just can't be as prescriptive around what houses go where because of new state law. And, you know, all of you want to make sure we achieve certain housing types and certain amounts of certain housing types, and so, but we haven't ever done it this way before. And so we heard that loud and clear, and we want to understand what are the complications and where, are there places where it starts to fall apart? And that's where we start to see, like, maybe 50% isn't the number. Maybe we should be talking about 60% because we need to have some flexibility in what happens with that gap, the gap in housing numbers. And now we're looking at, like, you know, we're just looking at all the different standards and what is happening when the model comes back and the site plans come back of things that aren't working. The other piece of it is, once we do that, if we have something that works with code as you've discussed it and in the direction that policy, that Planning Commission City Council has given us, then we're going to be running it through. But we're going to be doing a financial analysis on it to understand the cost of the different housing types that are modeled in that site plan and whether or not that will be feasible or not.
The cost to whom?
Cost to developer to build, and so, but understanding, like, what is the cost to build is also going to help to understand, like, the potential cost of those homes. We'll also be doing an assessment on that just in terms of looking at what are those housing types selling at in the area in, you know, basically within our market area to understand what the cost of those would be to a buyer or a renter. So we're going to be looking at that just to understand what, and what is feasible or not. So part of that is a phasing plan, if I'm correct. I was just reviewing that scope a couple days ago. But we'll be looking at, like, how might it build out? And with each of those projects, would it be feasible or not? You know, I mean, some of it changes day by day. You know, we're in a period right now with higher interest rates. We're in a period with costs of materials being higher. There's just a lot of added costs right now to development. And so, you know, some of those things can change day by day, so I don't expect that our analysis is going to be like, you know, it won't ring true for every day from now until forever. But at least it's a truth tester. One of the things we want to understand is, like, how expensive is it going to make it? Does it make that development a lot more costly by having the variety at the level we're having it at? Or is there too many units of a certain type that wouldn't be marketable because too many of those unit types would be coming on the market all at once? So those are the kinds of things we want to understand. Because this is, as Dan mentioned, we're in a new era of housing and codifying housing and housing need, and we're all trying to deal with it, and it's more difficult than it has been in the past. And so it's just going to be a challenging topic and work for us to get through, and that's why we're doing these additional analyses and trying to bring you this additional information so that we make sound policy.
If I may add back to your question about the conversations in the meetings, the important thing to remember, I think there is value, there has been value in having some leniency in what our typical rules are for discussions during the work session items. But the important thing for Planning Commission to remember is that this is one part of a larger area, and this is one developer in the larger area. And so as long as Planning Commission kind of keeps that in the back of your head, that we are talking, when West Hills comes up, they're talking about the area that they've got under contract, but we are looking at a larger area than just that when we talk about the standards.
Sure. I guess the last thing I'll say is, one thing I kind of crave as an engineer is that it would be great to see something like this and what an average cost per unit is compared to one that meets the block variability and the stormwater distribution and the housing variety and what the cost per, would change on that, and just kind of see that in dollars and cents of what that does to the bottom line to adhere to some of those. I don't know if that's possible, but that's what I crave.
That's a great idea. I like it as well.
You're an engineer.
I know.
All right.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay.
Oh, no.
Please continue.
Good discussion. It's a good segue, too. So, yeah. Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. I'm Carrie Rappel, the city's Natural Resources Manager, and with me here tonight is Angela Whalen. She's with Brown and Caldwell, and they've been working on the master plan update. So really what we want to do tonight is just give you kind of a quick overview, sort of a preview of what you're going to be seeing in terms of a draft master plan. We're hoping to finalize that by the end of November, and we just wanted to spend a little bit of time giving you some information, some, you know, important information that will be in that draft master plan. So the city undertook this project starting in 2021, and this is an update to the master plan that was done in 2012. So typically, as you know, master plans are about a 10-year period or so, 10 to 15 years in terms of updating those. So we're just going to walk through what you have in your packet tonight. You had an executive summary that really is reflective of what you'll be seeing in the draft master plan. And then a really important piece, certainly the capital improvement program and how do we deal with these various situations that we have throughout the city. So we're going to talk a little bit about the public input that we got back in 2021 as far as people's perspective on stormwater management in Wilsonville, and then talk a little bit about the development process in terms of how we went about looking at problem areas, you know, looking at solutions in terms of what we see out there, the modeling we did, the various things that we did in terms of talking to staff and really getting their input. you know, looking at solutions in terms of what we see out there, the modeling we did, the various things that we did in terms of talking to staff and really getting their input. As I mentioned previously, our NPDS MS4 permit is really important in terms of what we're doing with this master plan. And there's something else called total maximum daily loads. It's really how we deal with bacteria and temperature and now mercury. We've had that added to our list. And so Angela will cover a little bit of that in terms of the interrelationship between these permits or these plans. And then we had these technical evaluations that we did. One that was kind of exciting with this project is that it was the first time we did some stream assessments and looked at something called hydro modification. And basically, hydro modification is just how runoff from developed areas affects those receiving waters, whether it's Beckman Creek, Coffee Lake Creek, ultimately, the Willamette River. And so we had an opportunity to do that with this master plan as well as look at some of those infrastructure needs, water quality, and, you know, really try to have a comprehensive plan. And then last is, we'll talk a little bit about some of these capital projects. There's two that we're highlighting. But there's a total of 17 projects that are part of that capital program. And then we'll just touch base at the end about the next steps. So, excuse me, back in 2021, we did a virtual open house. And as part of that, we had a period there between April and May where we left it open as far as a survey. And we also had an article in the Boone's Ferry Messenger. We've had our Let's Talk site, like most of these projects have at this point. And so we gathered a lot of information. There was 90-plus participants, which was a really good turnout. And they provided some great input in terms of what the city's currently doing and the perspectives on that. And so overall, it appears that people are pretty happy with what we're doing as far as managing stormwater in the community. And that there's really some issues there or general perspectives that are shared among the residents in the community in terms of their interest in protecting streams and fish and wildlife. You know, everybody wants to see a good standard in terms of water quality where these streams can be, you know, swimable, fishable, and provide, you know, for all the aquatic organisms, too. And one of the things we've been very fortunate in this community is we don't really have a lot of flooding issues. Where we do have flooding, they're kind of a result of some other problems that are associated with those sites. And so that's always been great to see that. You know, it's not something that is widespread within the community, certainly. And then, you know, it seems like people are pretty happy with our stormwater infrastructure. You know, when you're talking about catch basins and stormwater pipes and stormwater facilities that we've been having a discussion about tonight. But, you know, there was an interest on the part of the public to, you know, think outside of the box. I really think that really gets to low-impact development, green infrastructure, and seeing more of that implemented in the community. And then sort of looking at these natural solutions. You know, they really are the best way of managing stormwater runoff. And, you know, you look at, like, the Coffee Lake wetlands. That plays a critical role in terms of what we see as far as runoff from the Villebois site. And so you like to see how these things are integrated into your overall approach. And then, you know, we can always do a better job with just educating the public about what we're doing. And so, you know, we definitely take that to heart and want to see that we do the best with that. I think I'll let you take over from there.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to talk just a little bit about our process. Carrie mentioned that this project started in the spring of 2021. So it is a long process. And I'll talk through some of the different steps and then get into a little bit more specifics. Back in the spring, as Carrie mentioned, we started our project needs assessment effort. And we started that effort so that we could focus attention on areas of the city that are of importance to the city staff because of recurring maintenance and other issues, but also to the public so that we can focus our technical efforts and make sure that we can develop projects and programs as part of this master plan that would ultimately be prioritized as part of an overall capital improvement program. That project needs assessment included a fair bit of data collection, coordination with city staff. We did do the public survey and solicited input from citizens and business owners. We conducted a number of staff interviews with public work staff to understand more about where they're seeing recurring maintenance issues or where they're getting phone calls a lot and having to go out and respond to something frequently. We did a number of different site visits and ultimately identified problem areas. And these problem areas, in turn, led to a number of technical evaluations. We wanted to understand why they're problem areas. We wanted to understand what types of solutions were even feasible so that we don't go down a rabbit hole and try to identify something that ultimately won't work. We moved from the technical evaluations into the capital program development. And so that included looking at the wide array of problems and project opportunities and ultimately coming up with project recommendations that fed into the capital improvement fact sheets that you see in the packet. We also recognized that there are some areas that would be better, some problem areas that would be better served as part of a citywide program. And so we wanted to make sure and define what those programs look like and cost those out so that those can be incorporated into the overall budget. Finally, and the coloring is not great, but we looked at capital program implementation. And that's the stage of the process that we're in right now, which is looking at staffing levels needed to actually implement the projects, engineering time to manage those projects, public works maintenance staff time to maintain the additional assets that are going to come about from those projects. We're looking at prioritization processes, so using a tool to help prioritize based on various criteria that cities identified as important. And finally, preparing the document and doing additional stakeholder outreach via a second virtual open house. Carrie had mentioned that the master planning process provides a really unique opportunity to address and correlate with regulatory drivers that the city is already required to do, different deliverables they're required to submit to DEQ. So that includes looking at different evaluation efforts that are ultimately needed as part of the stormwater management program to comply with the MS4 permit. So those activities that we're doing as part of this master planning process ultimately inform those deliverables to DEQ and help really describe what the stormwater system and the stormwater program is in the city. But in return, the master planning process allows for development of project needs that meet those regulatory obligations. We're identifying water quality projects. And we're identifying program needs and staffing implications that ultimately, to be executed, would need to be pulled into a master plan, a capital improvement program, and an overall funding strategy. So we did, once those problem areas were identified, I mentioned that part of the, part of the main technical elements were to identify why those are in fact problem areas. We did that through a couple different technical evaluations. And I'm not going to go into a ton of specifics on it. But one of that was, we updated the hydrologic and hydraulic modeling that was done under the previous master plan. Development standards have changed. Zoning, land use has changed. And so we needed to look comprehensively at how those coverages have changed within the city so that we could model the associated runoff and sized facilities appropriately based on future development conditions. We conducted a stream assessment where we looked at specific reaches of Beckman, Meridian, and Arrowhead Creeks for a couple different reasons. One of which was to baseline these, the stream conditions so that in the future, you can go out and evaluate how things have changed in conjunction with growth and development. The second reason we did it, though, was to identify areas where infrastructure may be at risk or the stream corridor and channel may also be at risk. And that would in turn lead to a capital project need. We looked at opportunities for stormwater quality retrofits. And this is one example of where that connection between the city's MS4 permit and the master plan really comes to head. The city's MS4 permit requires the city, actually, in the next couple of months, to document how their water quality retrofit strategy that was submitted back in 2015 is being implemented. And so this master plan provides a prime opportunity to reevaluate those project needs that were identified back then, determine if they're still feasible, identify additional opportunities, enroll that documentation together with the master plan and submit it to DEQ kind of in parallel. Finally, we looked at maintenance needs evaluation. And this required input from the public works operations folks who identified both where they're currently doing maintenance activities, the frequencies that they're doing maintenance activities, and where there may be gaps in what they're doing based on limited staffing so that we could recognize that gap and incorporate that into program, additional program funding as well as staffing needs. So once the technical evaluations were completed, we ultimately had 47 project opportunities. And these are a combination of specific areas where one of those technical evaluations identified a need, but also those original problem areas. In some cases, some of these areas overlapped. So that gave us an opportunity to develop a multi-objective project that could address multiple needs stemming from, you know, public feedback, city feedback, and proactive future, future solutions. These project opportunities were characterized based on the objective. So in some cases, this project would address a capacity limitation, recurring maintenance, system repair and replacement. So in some cases, infrastructure is failing and would ultimately need to be replaced anyway. Infrastructure needs, so this is targeted at growth areas of the city where new infrastructure needs to be added to support development such as Front East and South. The inclusion of additional water quality facilities, including standalone water quality facilities, which is somewhat uncommon in traditional master plans to have a facility that's solely based on water quality objectives. And finally, erosion and sediment control. So in-stream improvements to improve the health and condition of receiving waters. In your packet, you have a series of fact sheets. We've also developed detailed cost estimates for those capital projects that have resulted in these. And as Carrie mentioned, we have a total of 16 projects, but they represent 21 separately funded and phased projects. Some of the projects are very large. And so we opted to split those into different phases that could be scheduled when funding is available. So I wanted to just give you a short preview of a few of the capital projects that you do have in your packet. I'll start by talking through this location, which is Day Road. Many of you might be familiar with this. It's been a recurring flooding, kind of a flooding area where north of Day Road is part of the Salt Creek Concept Plan. So ultimately, will be developed. And presumably, increased flow will be coming down south towards the Day Road culvert and this area adjacent to the Commerce Circle industrial property. This project overall addresses capacity and repair and replacement needs that are observed at that project site. The flooding was identified in the 2012 master plan. And the city's conducted a number of different assessments and exercises to evaluate options and alternatives for addressing this. As mentioned, part of our work was to update the citywide hydrology based on current and future development conditions. And so we wanted any project solution for this area to be representative of those assumptions. This area, and I know the map is a little bit small, but in your fact sheet, you have a, maybe a little bit larger. But ultimately, there are, the area is very flat. There's also a berm on one side that really limits the conveyance capacity of the open channel. There's also low-lying industrial property that has a tendency to flood into the parking lot. There's a number of culverts and other infrastructure that is failing or deficient. And back in 2019, I believe AKS also did an assessment of this area and identified some alternatives. So with our updated hydrology and updated model, we wanted to evaluate feasibility of those alternatives in this overall concept. So the overall project concept is split into two phases. One is a restoration of the channel, increase a little bit of capacity in that channel. And then, secondly, it is replacement and increase in pipe size of the downstream system. And that's part of Phase Two. And the reason that that is set aside as Phase Two versus Phase One, you would commonly identify the downstream improvement as Phase One, do that first and then do the upstream. But the development up north of Day Road is going to impact the need to do Phase Two of that project. And so part of the master plan includes a number of planning projects, and one of which is to conduct more specific flow monitoring of the system so that we have better understanding of the drainage configuration and the flows of the system, which we were, it's very hard to try to validate and calibrate the hydraulic. I'll just move on. This is another capital project that we do have listed in the master plan. This is related to Maury's Landing. The objectives for this location include capacity limitations, recurring maintenance needs associated with the bubbler, and the ability to retrofit or add water quality to an already developed area.
Could you just explain what a bubbler is?
Sure. A bubbler is basically a catch basin with no pipe coming out of it. So water goes into it, and the only way out of it is through the top. So it's not a very, not a very, I don't know, beneficial solution to localized flooding because you're ultimately just storing it and it comes out the top there. So right now, public works maintenance staff have sandbags around this area. It's adjacent to a home. And so having standing water always collected out one spot without anywhere to go has been a source of many phone calls. We wanted to look at this area a little more specifically. Part of this overall project location, if you go further south, is associated with an area called Belknap Outfall. And that was a project identified in the 2012 master plan that has since been upgraded and replaced. And so a portion of the system has already been upsized and replaced. The area that we're looking at is further north, further upstream. And the modeling had identified some capacity limitations. But ultimately, we were looking at solutions to put that bubbler offline and connect the pipe network into the overall downstream conveyance system while also including an opportunity for a water quality retrofit within that BPA unit there. And so this was an application where it was a available open space that we could use to incorporate some level of treatment as well as hopefully get some level of retention and remove flow from the system. As mentioned, with those 47 project opportunities, there were a few locations that ultimately would benefit from being looked at at a citywide scale. And so those were rolled into proposed programs. And these programs are listed here. A localized drainage improvement program, which would set aside funding for public works maintenance to go out and do periodic replacements, adding an additional inlet, replacing a manhole, adding, you know, more of a proprietary water quality system, a sediment manhole or something like that to target some localized water quality issues. The second program that we have is a porous pavement and green street retrofit program. This is, again, a way to set aside funds to look at transportation improvements as they come about, recognizing that there's water quality benefits to inclusion of porous pavement or porous pavement overlays that could be applied, which isn't universally done within the city. But we wanted to create a way for a pilot study or a pilot project to be done at any one time. The third one is a repair and replacement program. The third one is a repair and replacement program. City of Wilsonville has relatively new infrastructure, but ultimately, that infrastructure fades over time, or fades and has faults and issues over time and would ultimately need to be replaced ideally on a proactive schedule. And so this looks at using your asset management program and the information through CCTV videos to inform a more prescriptive and proactive means of repair and replacement activities. So you don't wait until the pipe is failing to go out and fix it. The fourth one is an inlet replacement program. This was a recommendation from Public Works Maintenance just related to the fact that in a lot of locations, localized flooding does occur, and it's really due to the fact there's a lack of an inlet there. And as opposed to rolling that into a larger capital project, they wanted to have means to go out and install inlets where they need to. Some of that work may overlap with the localized drainage improvements, but for right now is categorized. And the fifth one is a vegetation maintenance program. And right now, this is a two-pronged program. One is to address areas where there's a lot of invasive species that were noted in the stream assessment and have a funding mechanism to go out and clean up some of that riparian vegetation. And that can be done a number of different ways, through volunteer and grant opportunities or through contracted efforts. The second component of that vegetation maintenance program does have to do with the fact that there are a number of LID and green infrastructure facilities within the city that might be failing and require a more substantive refurbishment in order to make them effective. And that has historically not been something that is proactively funded. So as mentioned, right now, we are in the process of moving into the capital program implementation side of things, where we have looked at staffing levels. We're both implementing the projects that are identified in the master plan as well as maintaining the additional assets that come about from that. But in conjunction with the staffing analysis, we recognize again that there's a connectivity between the master plan and the regulatory elements that are feeding into the master plan. So the city was just issued their new MS4 permit in 2021, so we took a look at some of the maintenance obligations and the programs that are identified within that updated permit to ensure that adequate staffing levels exist within the city to implement those over the permit term, which is five years. This is just a brief example of our project prioritization. We're using a multi-criteria decision tool to help evaluate project needs against various criteria. We've solicited waiting information as well as scoring information from Public Works, from community development and engineering to help inform the priorities and the ultimate scheduling of these projects.
Thanks, Angela. I'll just wrap up here. So as I mentioned at the start, we're looking to finalize the draft master plan by the end of November. And right now, we're looking at the possibility of another virtual open house in the middle of December and to make this information available to the public. And then we'll be moving it through the process with the Planning Commission and the City Council in terms of the draft and final master plans and getting this wrapped up by, you know, spring of next year. One of the needs we'll have as we move forward is we'll have to do a rate study to look at, you know, what we're proposing in this master plan and how that'll be accommodated through our utility fee and our system development charges that, you know, all factor into what happens in terms of what individuals or residents pay and what happens with development in our community. So we can take any initial questions you have now. Like I said, we just wanted this to be a preview, and, you know, you'll have more of an opportunity when we get to the draft master plan level. But it's a lot of information to take in, so I think, you know, little bites at a time are probably, are the most effective way. So, thank you.
I have nothing.
Are you sure?
I am.
I was just curious about the input you shared from the survey, and there was different ideas around like innovative solutions or things like that. So how did that get considered or like factored into what we're talking about now?
Yeah, do you want to handle that one?
Oh, the outcome from the surveys really showed that, for the most part, citizens in the city are very well-educated and informed. They understand what stormwater is, they understand the implications of it, they understand what assets and infrastructure are related to making sure that stormwater doesn't, isn't a detriment to receiving water health. And so that being said, we did try to take, some of the feedback that we received was related to problem areas. So that, and that feedback was directly incorporated into the problem area list, and we looked to overlap those with area, you know, in some cases, some of those reported issues stem from areas that are going to be redeveloped in the near term. And so those didn't necessarily translate to a project, but we wanted to recognize those, and those were documented in the master plan. But as far as innovative solutions, what we tried to do, that Maury's Landing was one example, where we recognized that, yeah, we could just upsize these pipes, and that would alleviate the bubbler, it might be kind of costly. But we wanted to recognize the fact that water quality, incorporation of water quality in a developed area has inherent benefits to the city, and not just complying with permits, but also aesthetics, livability, things like that. And so we looked specifically at that BPA easement corridor. We looked at elevations and drainage patterns and tried to incorporate use of the city's stormwater design standards and the sizing of that area, and really honed in a little bit more on what those kind of multi-objective solutions would look like. I think another area that we did focus quite a bit of effort on is looking at Memorial Park and Library Pond right now, and that has been a stormwater feature. In working on your MS4 permit, I've always been aware of Library Pond because that's where you do a lot of your stormwater monitoring from. But we wanted to look more specifically at the sizing and ability of that facility to accommodate redevelopment and growth. And so one of, one of the other projects in there is a retrofit of that facility to make it more functional from a maintenance perspective, allow better access, but also allow it to be redesigned in a way that coincides with your design standards and brings it a little bit more up to the present.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate that, just hearing some examples of how that was incorporated.
Got anything? Go for it.
When we were talking before about LID and dispersing the stormwater, the burden of replacing that media and maintaining the media in an LID approach is on the homeowners' association, as I understand it. And so many of these projects are falling on the city. So is there a criteria of like when it falls on the homeowners' association and when it falls on the city?
Yeah, it really depends on like, you know, why was that facility installed? And so like case in point, like we did, you know, improvements along Garden Acres Road, and all of those facilities, you know, because they were part of a capital project, they become the city's responsibility. But where you have, like in the case of Frog Pond, Frog Pond West, you know, those facilities were part of the actual development of that area. And so though, even though they're in the right of way, we allow facilities to be placed in the right of way, but they're still privately owned and maintained because they're, they were associated with that development. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does answer my question for going forward, but some of these projects that have been described, I would have thought they would have possibly have been put in as part of the development and was curious why they weren't part of the homeowners.
Yeah, well, we're still in a process of trying to catch up in many ways. You know, there's, there's a lot of area within the city that has no active stormwater management, and, you know, we've dealt with issues like outfalls along the Willamette River where, you know, you might have significant areas that have not even like detention facilities or anything. And, and so we're always in the process of trying to catch up and to retrofit areas, which, you know, that can occur from a number of different perspectives.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
What was the rationale for the funding levels for, for those items? Because they seem low. I mean, I was just looking at them, and they all kind of in general seemed like you might be able to do one project a year for each of them, maybe two on P1. I just wanted to understand that a little more.
Yeah, I don't know if, I mean, some of it's certainly related to the discussions that we had at the staff level and the capacity that there is to, to deal with these. And so, you know, we also want to create, you know, funding pots of money there that, you know, we're not going to push our rates too far out of line. And so we want to be really cognizant of that, but yeah, I don't know if you have something else to add, Angela?
I think just to kind of mimic that, those are intended to be annualized, right? And so they go into a pot of money that eventually grows over time. And, you know, over the course of a few years, maybe that opportunistic, well, that opportunistic transportation project will present itself where we can put an overlay on this portion of the road and obtain different benefits and monitor that as a pilot study. And so those, it's really hard to define those type of opportunities upfront, to know how many there will be, but wanted to set aside some level of funding so that it's recognized as a goal while also allowing for accrual and accumulation over time. The localized drainage improvements, we did ask Public Works Maintenance, you know, how often do you have to go out there and just fix something like, and what is the, what is that cost that would allow you to do that kind of independently or through an on-call kind of situation where you don't have to go out for a larger, larger bid or something like that, and you can just kind of handle it? And that $100,000 mark that is in there was sort of in alignment with the level of effort that they're, they're seeing.
Thank you. The rate study, I'm really interested to see, see that as we progress. You know, the one thing that I wrote down is, as I was looking through this and, you know, understanding what level of stormwater, stormwater capital projects we've funded over the last 10 years, you know, because I was trying to pull out that, you know, we've got lots of millions of dollars in this list, and, and how does that align with what we've been doing historically, or is this going to be a, a big ramp up over the next 20 years from a, from a rate perspective or, you know, however we ended up funding it?
Sure. Yeah, we have to certainly discuss that with the city council and, you know, get their input and what, you know, what levels we can set in terms of. And we're always adjusting that in terms of how we look at our, our list. And, you know, you know, we look at it from a, you know, a five-year perspective, 10-year, 20-year perspective. So, and sometimes, you know, we're, we're just in a response mode, unfortunately. We had to deal with that many times with these outfalls that we had on the Willamette River. And, you know, so some of this we can gauge, some of it, you know, it's more, you know, immediate in terms of how we deal with the situation.
Yeah, okay. And then the last thing, just a very, I guess, technical. So when you define a water quality facility, are there specific purposes for the facilities, and do they vary depending on the location? I'm assuming different turbidity or oxygenation or whatever it might happen to be that you're trying to improve?
I mean, in general, they're all going to provide, you know, for kind of, you know, the usual pollutants that we're going to see associated with sediment and, and, you know, bacteria. Like I said, we have this new one in regards to our mercury requirements. Most of the mercury that we have that, you know, ends up in our runoff is coming from the atmosphere. And so there's not a lot that we can do to prevent it, but we can, you know, work to treat it. And so, but yeah, it's, it's going to be basically the same constituents in terms of pollutants wherever we put these facilities. But it's important to like, you know, sort of prioritize areas where we don't have them, like Angela was alluding to with Maury's Landing. That whole area south of Wilsonville Road on the west side, there's very little in regards to stormwater facilities. And so that's, you know, an area that we'd want to make a priority of.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just quickly to add on, you know, flow impact development type facilities, vegetated stormwater facilities provide truly good pollutant removal in accordance with effectiveness information that's well documented. There's a number of different unit processes that they use to get it both total and dissolved constituents. There's vegetation that enhances uptake, and also through these facilities, we encourage infiltration, a retention and infiltration of stormwater too, which is another means to remove pollutants before they discharge via overland flow or pipe flow into receiving water. So the types of facilities that are proposed in alignment with your design standards are done kind of intentionally with your MS4 permit and those bits in mind.
Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate the discussion. All right. Looks like we get to transition from stormwater to wastewater.
All right, is it, are we on?
Yep, you sure?
Okay. So hello, Planning Commission. I'm Mike Nacraley, Senior Civil Engineer, City of Wilsonville, and I've got Dave Price with me from Corolla Engineers. I'm, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Yeah, if you want to go into presentation mode, other than that, it's great.
Yeah, let me do that. So it's been a while, I think it's been about a year since we last presented to you, and in that time, we've done a little more analysis, looking more closely at the industrial flows and loads particularly, especially from our existing permitted industries and what those discharges could increase to in the future just based on what's allowed under their So that did increase the flows and loads that would be coming to the treatment plant over the planning period. And then in order to really better understand those impacts at the plant, we did additional hydraulic modeling at the treatment plant to just better understand how it would respond and what kind of upgrades, additional upgrades might be needed. And so that has impacted our capital improvement program and as well as some of the additional chapters in the master plan. So we're just going to kind of run through some of those highlights of, you know, what's, what's changed since we've done that additional work. And, you know, this slide here is not changed. This is just looking at population projections, just kind of a refresher of, you know, we track along with the collection system master plan projections until we get close to the end of the planning period, then our numbers actually come out a little bit lower just because, you know, in the time since that collection system master plan was done, there was the Basalt Creek Concept Plan where the far north end of the planning area was determined, you know, would eventually be served by Tuolotin. So there's a, you know, the slight decrease at the tail end of the planning area in terms of projected populations. And this is just kind of a summary of the land uses that we went over with the planning department based on what, you know, what kind of development we would expect to see between now and 2045 in the different parts of the city. And again, that's not changed since, you know, we last presented to you. But some of these numbers have But some of these numbers have increased a bit. And that's in this third or fourth, you know, column here, the projected flows and loads. If you compare them with the, the 2022 column, which is, you know, the last full year available, essentially all these numbers are doubling or projected to double over the planning period. So that's really what's driving the need for, you know, pretty extensive improvements at a, at a very small piece of land that we've got to work with. And so this is just kind of a summary of the, the unit processes. And so secondary treatments, we're looking at initially adding an aeration basin. And then after that, because of space constraints, starting to phase in membrane bioreactors. And again, that's just really one of the few technologies available that can provide the, the needed level of treatment in the space that we've got to work with. Then effluent cooling towers, we would need to add one near the end of the planning period just to, to meet the temperature limits. And then the one item on here, this last one, is new since the, you know, the last presentation. And that is due to that hydraulic modeling that we performed, kind of found that there were some bottlenecks in just processing the volume of water that would be coming through the plant. And so near the end of the planning period, we're showing some hydraulic improvements here to the outfall piping on the plant site. And then the UV system. We have right now two UV systems. One of them was put in with the, the last major upgrade in 2014. And that one is expected to need to get replaced at the, you know, end of the planning period. Then there's another one that's even older and that's going to get replaced in the short term. So the, the replacing of the, the one that's currently newer is a new project that's been added to the list. And that's not necessarily capacity-driven, but just the age that, that that's going to be at that time. So just, you know, looking at the alternatives that we considered. Again, for secondary process, we have a new aeration basin, which is the, the technology we're currently using right now, which also would require an additional blower. But then again, after that, we would have to phase in MBR technology. And that also does include some hydraulic upgrades. Again, just to handle the volume of water that we'll be seeing at the plant. And then we have as well some solids. And the UV system, like I mentioned, those are condition-related improvements, not necessarily for capacity, but just because it's, it's older equipment or it will be by the time of, you know, the end of the planning period. Didn't mean to advance that yet. And then, yeah, so that's just summary of those, those items. And then, I don't know, Dave, you want to mention anything that I haven't brought up on these?
I don't know if you wanted to mention it now, Mike, but some of the additional costs that, that we've identified in this, in this version, I guess, or this revision to the update to the master plan, as Mike mentioned, is in response to, you know, reconsidering what commitments the city may already have to some of the existing industrial users. And as we evaluated the hydraulics, working with the, the Jacobs team out at the wastewater plant, it became apparent that some of the piping internal out there at the plant was going to need to be upsized in order to accommodate this more intense treatment that's going to be required toward the end of the period, the, toward that end of the 2045 period. And it's important for everybody at the city to keep in mind that, that those future, like far in the future, 20-year-out kind of improvements, remember, we're, we're trying to keep our projections of wastewater generation closely aligned with the projections that were presented in the collection system master plan back in 2014. And what we have observed is that, improperly so, I, I would say, that in that collection system plan, the city's team was rather conservative in estimating the amount of flow that might be coming from some of the undeveloped industrial areas. And so I, I would just be encouraging the city to make sure that they, that they keep careful track of what's happening within those areas in particular, as there can be higher variability. You can get industries that don't use really hardly any water and some, some higher water users. And the impact of potentially of having less water coming from certain portions of the service area would be there might be some savings at the end of the planning period related to these hydraulic upgrades. And it may have some implications even for the full rollout of this membrane technology that Mike mentioned. That's going to require some additional evaluation. It may require, when, when the city looks again at the collection system and what to do in the long run with the collection system, it may, it may require the city to ask some questions, you know, down the road about how things are developing and what kinds of uses are showing up and how much water they're using and sending to the wastewater plant. So that, that part, I hope I didn't jump too far ahead there, Mike, but I think that's just an important thing for everybody to, to kind of keep in mind.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think we'll get into that a little more when we start looking at the individual projects on the, the list and the, the costs associated with them. But yeah, that's, that was a, a comment we received when we, you know, spoke last time to the Planning Commission was that, that the timing and the extent of these improvements is going to, you know, have to be driven by what's, what's happening at the plant and how well it matches up with what we're projecting here. So, you know, this is our best estimate in terms of, you know, the modeling. But it's going to have to be verified by just the, the actual monitoring of flows that come into the plant as well as the collection system master plan update, which is in our near-term CIP to better understand how the entire sewer system in the city responds to these flows. Because, you know, there, there may be, especially when we start talking about the, the peak hourly flows that are driving some of these improvements, those may be reduced depending on how, how much storage is available in the collection system. And that's, you know, that's kind of beyond the scope of this project, but it is something the city will be looking at. And so the results of that update, I think, will kind of better inform the implementation of, of this master plan and, and could end up reducing the need for some of these hydraulic improvements. And, you know, these are all, they're kind of laid out here on this, this graphic. So the, I believe north is to our left, right, Dave?
Yeah.
And so the, the flows come in here from the north, which is the left-hand side of the screen. And, you know, gets, gets routed through the, the headworks and then over to the aeration basins, which are here, upper left, and then over to the secondary clarifiers. And that's the conventional secondary process, which will work for, you know, the next probably five or more years. But then when that's kind of maxed out is when we would have to be converting this, this big blue box here in the middle, that's the MBR building. And that would replace one of the existing secondary clarifiers that would no longer be used. And that's, that's where the, the membrane technology would get phased in over time. And then there's, you know, additional projects that were identified, you know, not only just in terms of wastewater treatment, but 17 here you can see for a, all the green ones. Those are seismic retrofits because we did some additional seismic analysis to determine, you know, what can be done to improve resiliency of these buildings. So there's, there's projects like that in here as well. And then the new cooling tower toward the end of the planning period. Then the fiber optic line that the city intends to, to bring out here to the, to the property line of the treatment plant. So looking at just putting in that conduit that would allow that to extend over to the administration building. And then over here, the number nine fine screens, that's a, something that would have to get added as part of the, the membrane, the first phase of the membrane technology. And then, Dave, if you want to just kind of run through the, the phasing schedule?
Right. So we have, in the, in the detailed version of the master plan, we've got some recommendations in there related to solids handling. And through the course of doing the work on the master plan, it was identified there were some performance issues with managing the solids from the facility and getting the dewatering to work optimally. So we, we suggested that there be sort of an evaluation of the process in a little bit more detail there to see if there's some way to improve that. That could have some impact on timing of replacement of some of the solids equipment or, you know, potentially the sizing of what that future equipment might be. This also is identifying the new aeration basin that was shown on the site plan and that, that Mike mentioned. That's something that we're projecting at this point needs to happen in the near term. You see 2025 to 2027 on here. I think on one of the previous slides, we had identified 2027 as, as a projected capacity kind of marker or a milestone. So you, you want to get to work on that and have that in place before you reach that point. And then the items that are shown there, kind of more like 2026 projects, 2027 projects, these are the replacement of the older backup UV system that Mike mentioned earlier, the seismic improvements to some of the buildings out there. And then one of the, a couple of the older clarifiers have got mechanical mechanisms in there that need to be replaced. So that's what you see there. The, the more intense treatment technologies start to come in later in this decade. So 2028, 2020, 2030-ish, the building with the basins where those membranes would go into would be, would be designed and, and, and put into, would be commissioned and put into operation. That includes some new blowers, the fine screens that Mike mentioned. And then there will be a fair bit of electrical upgrades that would need to be undertaken in order to serve this newer process. It's going to require some more pumping, more air, which means blowers, all of which means more electricity to make that work. Then we're showing in the 2030s there, beginning there, some of the improvements on the solids side of the house. We talked a fair bit about the, the dryer that the city is implementing, that is utilizing out there to dry solids. And that will have been in operation on the timeframe shown on this slide, I guess, getting on 15, 20 years. And there have been some issues operationally with that. And so that really is what that represents, is making sure that that gets addressed. And there's more detail on the recommendations of that, on that in the plan. And then as we get further out, more effluent going to the river is going to mean we need to be careful about what the temperature implications of that additional effluent are. And so we've identified a new cooling tower as a result of that. So that would be additional to, to the ones that are out there already. And then you start to see that as the loads and the flows to the plant increase, additional phases of membrane equipment are brought online. This wouldn't necessarily require any structure construction. The idea would be that Phase 1 would provide the structure. And then the subsequent phases would be equipment that would be added into basins or might be pumps or blowers that would be added to buildings that are, are going to be needed for this, to run this equipment and to make it work properly. And then, and then as Mike said, once you get to later in the 2030s and the early 2040s, these improvements, the UV equipment replacement there is really just to make sure that you've got money in your capital program to replace that UV equipment. Even the new equipment that would be going in soon will have been in operation for quite some time by the time we get to the 2040s. So the assumption is, hey, let's get a placeholder for some, some budget to replace that. But the outfall improvements that are shown below the timeline there, and then the third phase, MBR, those are the things that I had mentioned earlier that potentially, if there are ways to reduce the peak hour flow, either through sort of a reassessment of what the expectations are in terms of the wastewater that would be generated from the service area when you're looking at the collection system master plan update or possibly finding ways to store some of those peak flows. It would be important to understand what the alternatives available there could be because we know that, that we're talking about potentially saving. Mike, I think we talked about potentially saving maybe $10 million just on the, kind of the initial Phase 1. If we can confirm that later on down the road, we can have some confidence that those peak hour flows are not going to increase. And then if you consider the work that would need to be done with the outfall improvements that are shown here and that third phase of the MBR facility, there's additional, there's additional millions of savings there too. The question will be, will it take millions to somehow shave the peak flows coming from the collection system? And that's, I think, really where the additional analysis is going to need to come in.
Yeah, since we're talking money, here's the, the table that has the, the project costs. And so these, these last two on the list are the ones that would, could potentially get avoided, you know, depending on, like Dave mentioned, either, you know, the, the flows that we're seeing just are lower than we're, than we're modeling or the collection system, you know, has more storage capacity and can, can reduce some of those peaks. Because, you know, it, when, when peak flows occur, they, they hit the, the sewer system right away. But by the time they travel all the way downstream through that system and get to the treatment plant, you know, they've, they've slowed down and could potentially be less than we're anticipating. So some of these costs, you know, we're, we're just going to have to see, you know, as time goes by, whether these, these last few projects are going to be needed. But by far the biggest cost on here you can see is the Phase 1 of MBR. That's That's, you know, because that's when we're putting the entire structure in place, all the electrical upgrades, you know, the the building itself that was going to house all the future MBR phases, so that's that's a pretty massive project that includes some facilities, well, at least includes space and electrical capacity for for all the future phases. So it's it's not just the equipment, so that's that's why when you look to MBR Phase Two and Phase Three, they're considerably lower because we're just adding equipment into existing, you know, buildings that would be built as part of Phase One. But it's it is primarily the hydraulic improvements that have driven up, I believe the last presentation we made, we were just under 100 million, and now we're looking at 120 million over that planning period. So again, that's we're trying to be conservative and just, you know, plan for the worst, but we'll be, you know, watching what happens, you know, with the additional collection system master planning, as well as this, you know, actual flow measurements and and in the loads that we're seeing at the treatment plant in the, you know, in the next five, 10 years would give us a probably much better idea of whether these these final improvements toward the end of the planning period are going to be needed or not. But and, you know, that'll be that'll also be looked at when we do the rate study and how best to to phase in, you know, these improvements and and refine them, refine those, you know, the funding mechanisms over time as we have better information. But, you know, here's kind of what the what the cash flow would look like if all these improvements end up being needed. And again, the biggest one here, that big blue spike, that's the that Phase One of MBR. So that's, you can see that the majority of this work is kind of weighted within the next 10 years. And so, you know, there hasn't been any kind of master planning or major improvement since the last upgrade in 2014, so we're kind of bumping up against the limits of what the plant can handle. So we're going to have a pretty aggressive capital improvement program going, at least in these initial years. Then just in terms of next steps, we will, we're going to present essentially the same findings to the city council next month, and then, you know, barring any major, you know, changes that are requested, we would plan to come back to Planning Commission in December for public hearing, and then following that, go to the city council in January for the public hearings, and then follow immediately after adoption of the master plan to do the rate study and better understand how we're going to finance these So with that, we can take questions. I can jump back to any slides if anybody had particular questions on them. There's a lot of information and a lot of very technical stuff, but we can do our best to try to sort through it.
All right, I'll jump into it, and I'll do it as fast as I possibly can. So I had to go back into my notes and the previous presentation. So September 2022, this estimate was 75 million. So we've gone from 75 million to 120 million in the span of a year with these increased industrial discharges.
That that's 75, it turns out, I had left out the engineering portion of it, and so that was just construction, so that that actual cost with everything included should have been in the 90s. So that was that was an oversight on my part with that last presentation. So, yeah, that about 25% roughly for engineering and other administrative costs, that would it brings it into the 90s.
Okay. The one thing that jumped out at me when I was when I was looking at this and the identification of being space constrained, I guess my question would be, and what I would like to see for next time is, if you weren't space constrained, what would this project cost be? So would you add clarifiers instead of going to MBR? You know, what would what would that overall plan look like? Because if, I mean, we're talking about a huge sum of money, and if it's a matter of acquiring some additional land south of the existing facility to add more equipment, maybe that's cheaper overall than than this huge increase for the MBR.
South of the existing land is the river.
You've got lots of trees and stuff that you could cut down.
Well, and there's there's a park as well, and, yeah, I mean, I guess we could cost out what a conventional expansion, you know, would take, but I, and and then if we had space, how much, you know, additional land it would require, but, yeah, I guess, you know, the assumption and the direction we've had isn't that, you know, we don't have room to grow. We're kind of...
If I could just jump in really quick, Mike, if I'm correct, this is all surrounded by Boon's Ferry Park, and there is deed restrictions that don't allow us to use it for anything other than a recreational use.
Okay. What's the property ownership on the east side?
High five. So the the east of it is all...
Oh, God. I believe.
Yeah, and there's a massive, well, massive, there's a very large, is that a cut there that's adjacent to those where the new aeration basin would go up in the northeast corner there?
Yeah, there's a significant retaining wall we're going to have to build here just to be able to put this additional basin in. So it's it's already kind of pushing, you know, what can be squeezed in here just to put this one aeration basin in due to the slopes, and, yeah, that's...
All right. Well, I guess at a high level, if if there is no physical space, at least if we can do that double check and make sure that you couldn't put a conventional facility, that there's no way to do it, that would be good information to have, because this is a huge sum of money. And, you know, especially when we're looking at a $60 million outlay in in 2020 or 2030, that's a that's a tough pill to swallow. I'm not sure how we make that work in a level that's acceptable. So I just want to make sure that we're looking at all the options out there.
Yeah, I suppose we can, we could run those numbers and like just have the cost of what what that would be estimated at, and then just how much space we would need, but there's, I think I'm pretty satisfied that with this, the property we've footprint that we've got here, there's no, yeah, I guess we could, we could come up with a map that would like probably, it would, it would run beyond this in this area, but...
Yeah, Mike, I guess from my perspective, if if there are deed restrictions that prevent us from doing so, then that's then that's one thing. I don't think the analysis is needed. I just want to make sure that there's not enough space that we could cobble it together and make it work. If if there's space, or if there's an opportunity to be creative, then let's be creative. If not, then then just let us know.
Yeah, I guess what I would throw out for consideration is that you've got to have access on the site for for trucks with trailers, so there's there's limited ability to encroach upon some of the traveled way that you see there. It's a little deceptive to look at this in an aerial because you've got some slopes on kind of all, like three sides of the site. And frankly, our analysis based upon the existing flows and loads and what's what's projected based upon the the collection system projections and the modifications that have been made to those as part of this analysis, there aren't too many square feet on the site that aren't that isn't being used. And when the facility was upgraded back in 2012, 2011, 2014, whatever that timeframe, there was a notion that beyond the three existing aeration basins and the three clarifiers that are in place out there now, that the next step was going to be to put some membranes in. I don't think that that project evaluated, I think that predated this the collection system master plan, so I don't think it evaluated sort of the full extent of what the implications of those of that might be. So I just want to make sure everybody knows we've looked hard at these conventional options, and part of what we are suggesting in terms of looking hard at what the expectations are coming out of the collection system master plan update, and whether or not things can be, peak flows can be reduced. A scenario that would reduce the cost of Phase One by maybe at least $10 million and eliminate the need for some of those future projects, that is, that's, that's an important thing that we want to make sure that we're encouraging everybody to think about, because in that scenario, you'd actually be running a plant that would be kind of a combined membrane plant and a conventional plant. Those two existing clarifiers don't go away until the final phase, the Phase Three that we show on these slides. So we're trying to preserve your conventional facilities for as long as we can. It's going to cost you the least to maintain existing facilities, and you're going to use less energy and chemicals to operate that facility than a more complicated, high-intensity system like an MBR.
And I think, you know, one thing we can do to maybe just improve this presentation would be if we we threw the property lines on here and maybe the contours, it would, I think, better convey how limited our our space is.
Yeah, Mike, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
I think, and then the last thing I had was just, the the reference in the staff report was was an increase in industrial discharge, but there wasn't anything that I I remember seeing that identified, you know, what is the current industrial discharge versus what's in the plan versus what the maximum is. So I don't know where in that window we are. Are we right at the maximum of what is theoretically possible from the permits in this plan, or are we some some amount lower than that? So that would be something that would be helpful to have for the next go around.
Okay, yeah, we can, we provide those numbers, and they would be in the plan that we will attach, you know, along with the the staff report. But I can answer the question is that, yes, we did, we assumed that all our permitted industries would be discharging the maximum allowed, which they're not currently doing. So that was a pretty significant impact, especially since they are, you know, the higher strength dischargers.
Yeah.
And so that's, you know, the the loads are just as important as the flows in terms of evaluating capacity.
Well, that's good feedback. We can incorporate that into the slides.
Yeah.
You might want to also incorporate into the master plan the risks associated with not doing this. You know, we hear of communities along the Willamette having wastewater failures and then having boil orders for for water and things, and so if you can articulate what the consequences of not doing this could be to to our river environment, that'd be great.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that maybe in the, we have a chapter on the regulatory constraints and, yeah, essentially, once, once you start exceeding your your limits, you get major fines from the DEQ and, you know, you can get to the point where you have to issue a moratorium until you fix your problem, and I don't think anybody wants that.
Well, and Mike typically, with an improvement of the scale, community would incorporate into the sort of more detailed planning and the preliminary design steps here, maybe even going so far as to help educate people when you start talking to them about rates and charges, some aspect of making sure that that message is getting out there, that it's not just buried in the in the master plan someplace. So I would, I would expect that that would be part of what needs to happen with the outreach related to the to the rates and letting people know why.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks, Dave.
So I noticed there's only two funding sources noted, rates and SDCs. So at the current rates and expected SDCs, what's our shortfall? So how are, how are we going to, and then how are we going to make up that shortfall?
Well, yeah, that's, that's what the rate study would have to answer. I mean, that's, that wasn't part of the scope of this, this planning effort. Yeah, that's, we're just kind of laying out what the, what the need is, and then, you know, the the rate study would have to delve into all those details, like phasing in, let me find that slide, the cash flow, like, how's how's that going to best work, you know, in terms of looking at, looking at loans from the state, you know, how long it would take to pay them back based in, based on what rates you're charging and how fast you're growing, et cetera.
They'll also need to take into consideration, Mike, how much of this is, there are some things here that are needs regardless of, the city could not grow one more inch.
All right, yeah, the the condition-related improvements versus the capacity-related improvements.
Right. Yes.
So, yeah, that's all going to get spelled out in in that rate study, and then...
And that rate study will be completed before we, before city council adopts the master plan or after?
Well, no, it would, it would come after because it would be figuring out how to implement it.
So we're creating a plan without a way to pay for it? Okay. It's not how I budget in my real life.
Well, it's, right, we're not, I mean, this isn't a budget document.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah.
Hey, good evening. Zach Weigl, City Engineer. Just wanted to provide a little bit of context on how we do master planning. These are needed projects. The city is going to grow to a certain population. That's what's needed for the treatment plant to meet that population demand. So that's typically how master plans work, is you figure out what the needs are, and then you do the the rate study afterwards to figure out the impact on fees and development costs. So that's the process we're following on this project. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, since, go ahead, go ahead.
When new developments happen...
Put your mic over.
When new developments happen, isn't a certain portion of those development fees going into the wastewater?
Yeah, and each one of these projects will be split based what the portion of that serves new development and what serves existing, existing customers. And that portion that is of new growth gets figured into the SDC cost.
Which impacts the portability.
So in terms of the growth rates that you included in this, I remember us having a discussion, I want to say this summer, around, and I think it was when the housing report came out, and there were limits of what Metro were putting on the city in terms of assumptions for growth versus what we were actually seeing for growth, and the actual numbers were outpacing the Metro projections. Which ones were used in your, in your engineering?
So we used the same that were done... So we used the same that were done with the collection system master plan. So it's a higher, it's a kind of aggressive growth rate has been kind of trending with what we've been seeing over the last 10 years on average. It's hard to know what's going to happen. Is it going to slow down? Is Metro going to put limits on the city to meet certain, you know, housing projections? So we think that the, the aggressive growth rate is the right, right measure to use for this plan.
Yeah, okay.
And we did actually compare these numbers with what the Metro, is it Zach, Transportation Analysis own projections are, and they were very close.
There's no MBR avoided, is what you're saying.
There really isn't a way to avoid the MBR. It's, there is ways to avoid additional chambers, I guess, chambers of MBR that we will be tracking over time. That's, you know, that's typical with a master plan is that you come up with what the needs are and you track population growth and flow and needs over time and you implement those projects when they're needed. And then every 10 years or so, we update the master plan and we look, take a deeper dive into the data and making sure we're following those projections and updating the master plan as needed. And so, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call it. We're done with this one. Mike, Dave, we appreciate it. I look forward to seeing it the next go around.
Thank you.
Do we want to take five before we jump into our last item?
Do we have a last item?
We have a last item.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, uh, let's re-adjourn at 8:45. All right, we are reconvened at 8:45 PM. Now we are on to an informational item, the 2023 Transportation Performance Monitoring Report.
All right. My name is Amy Pepper. I'm the Development Engineering Manager for the city. Thank you for having me tonight. You've heard tonight from a couple of our utilities looking forward. Tonight I'm here to present to you a look back on our transportation system plan and kind of provide a report card on how we are doing in our transportation system. So our transportation system plan has a number of policies and programs and projects that we monitor and report our, our performance measures every three years on. So this is a report again on those performance measures. There are seven goals in our transportation system plan that we monitor and with the help of DKS, our traffic consultant, they provide this report to us. So our first goal is safety and this information is provided from 2016 to 2020. I should step back, our last performance monitoring report was updated in 2020. So since that time, we've gone through the pandemic and the information used in this update is from 2019 to 2022. So for safety, we look at a five-year period essentially, and it's only until 2020 because it's based on ODOT reports. So that's, that's the most recent data. Our safety did fall a little bit from the last report. We have some recommended actions about working with ODOT on some safety fundings and some safety improvements where we know we have some unsafe intersections. Our next goal is connectivity and accessibility, and that's to provide our residents with multimodal access to our parks, schools, employment centers, et cetera. And you'll see on this graphic, sidewalk improvements are on the left side of the screen. So we have sidewalk improvements in Frog Pond West, Garden Acres, Ville La Bois, and then some RFBs that we've installed throughout the city. And then on the right is some bicycle improvements that we've implemented. Again, Garden Acres around Town Center Loop and Wilsonville Road where we've added some bike lanes to improve that connectivity and accessibility. And that has all been installed since 2019. Another component of this goal is to track just usage. And this information comes to us from a new source. DKS has used this source that is still, still being tested, but it essentially tracks people's cell phone usage on kind of a grand scale and it can track how you're getting about. It, it does have some imperfections, but it does provide some good data. So biking trips were down during the pandemic, biking and walking trips were down lower than we expected, but they are increasing, especially the biking throughout the city. So it's a good metric that we are seeing some increased activity out in our community with biking and walking. Our third goal is function, that it needs to be functional and reliable, our system. So our traffic volumes are down from 2019. Likely that's still some impacts from the pandemic where people are working remote, but we are seeing those increase, just kind of slower than 2019. And we are seeing some interesting things come out of our industrial area, especially Day Road, where the traffic volumes are spreading out that peak volume. So their peak volume is kind of spreading to that three to four PM. In our, in our code, it's four to six is what we look at for peak volume for development. So one of the recommendations that maybe we consider expanding that peak volume analysis when we're looking at new development in the Day Road area especially. And if you think about that, just for industrial areas, as they add new shifts, they may have a swing shift that has more traffic during that time. Our fourth goal is our program should be cost effective. And there was no new data collected for this update. It will be collected in our next update. So we just have some continual recommended actions that we're, you know, watching the PCI of our streets, that we have an action plan that we're targeting areas of concern for the public, et cetera. Our next goal is that it's compatible and we didn't collect any data on this goal either this time around. We will collect it at the next time. And that's just monitoring where we do have improvements to make sure that they're compatible with what our goals are and what our urban upgrades are, you know, along Boons Ferry, Brown Road, Ritter Road, et cetera. Our sixth goal is that we have a robust mode share and this kind of gets at our target for our transit as well. Our surveys did have increased positivity for biking and ease of driving and ease of transit. And for some reason, we had a decreased survey related to walking. It could be related to the pandemic. People were out walking a little bit more, maybe they were using our sidewalks a little bit more and noticing more defects as they were out and about in the community. I anticipate that's probably going to level off as people get more accustomed to what's actually in our system. And our seventh goal is it promotes livability. We monitor this based on citizen surveys. There was a, some decrease in positivity about sidewalk maintenance and street repair. So we just need to monitor that again as people were at home more during the pandemic. Is that more of their shift of the attitude as you're noticing more things? I notice I, I know I noticed a lot more things around my house that I wasn't as excited about. So that may be leveling off as people go back to their normal activities moving forward. So that was very quick and you had the full update in your packets and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. Any questions I can't answer, I will follow up with DKS and provide you a full answer.
I would have known it was going to be that quick. We went to taking a break. The only question I have is for goal three, does this report card align with the feedback we're getting from residents and employees that are in the city in terms of how things are functioning?
You know, the feedback we get from the public is skewed because of the Boone Bridge failure. So it's hard to say how people are feeling about getting out and about around the city. And then we've have a lot of active construction projects and most recently, we've had some traffic control issues related to some of our, our construction activities. So I, it's a little bit skewed and it's hard to say if people are feeling like, yes, they, they're finding it reliable, that they're finding like, if they want to go to, you know, Tigerd, for example, they know how long it's going to take, or if they want to go to Sherwood, they know how long it's going to take and, and they could anticipate that time. That's part of that reliability because we have these outside factors that we can't control. And I think the reliability, we may see a little bit of a decline of feedback from the public as, you know, the Beckman Bridge is about to go under construction. That's going to be a major reroute of traffic. So we may see a decline in, in how people perceive the system working because we have these major projects on, you know, we have 95th that's under construction right now with the water supply. So it's not all about how our system is designed, but there are some impacts just based on construction activities and the Boone Bridge.
Are we going to look at those things in terms of those impacts as those things start to progress?
You know, I think we have to look at the big picture overall. I think there will be improvements. 95th is, they should be doing restoration activities, opening it back up before they move to close another section for that project. So we are monitoring the construction activities around the city to make sure we're trying to minimize some of the impacts to the citizens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Looks like we're good. Next up, no staff presentation? No staff presentation? Is Bate Shell anything or are you good?
Um, I actually would like to hand the floor to Mr. Polly, who's going to talk a little bit about what to expect next month because if you've noticed in your packet, the November meeting will be slightly different.
And emphasize a little bit at this hour. So it is our rent burden meeting. We'll, we'll be convening a primarily virtual meeting. We'll have a space here if people don't want to join virtually where they can come and join virtually as a group from here. But more details will come from, from the team, including Kim Ribald, who's leading the effort. And this is, has kind of two purposes briefly. I mean, this is a meeting that's actually required by statute because Wilsonville has met a threshold of being rent burdened at a certain percentage, which it prior has not. So all the jurisdictions that meet a certain threshold are required to hold this meeting annually. But also it provides input into our housing, our future project, which is our ongoing project to plan for future housing need and what strategies we can use to produce housing into the future. So we look forward to that conversation. If you have any questions, hope you can all participate. I know Kim will, or I will be reaching out to some for potential roles, so, and we will hope to see you there and it should be a good conversation. Anything to add, Miranda?
I think the only thing I would add is that the expectation is that hopefully you all can make it, like a planning commission meeting. This is being hosted by you as the Committee for Citizen Involvement. So we definitely want your participation. And as you know, you're making a lot of different policy decisions right now about housing. So having an opportunity to engage with those who will attend this meeting will be very helpful, I think, for you to hear what they have to say, get input and then be able to think about that and consider that as we make future policy decisions around housing. But we didn't want to have like all of you up here and then engaging primarily with a bunch of people online. We felt like that might be awkward, which is why we are going to essentially host it as an online open forum, virtual for anyone who wants to attend. But if anybody has limitations to participating virtually, we'll have a space and capacity set up here where they can essentially tap into a virtual meeting with everybody. That way. That way it's a little bit more seamless.
Check in as members and we'll have our own, just like the normal virtual meeting.
Yeah, like the way we used to and, because we used to be virtual for a while. And we'll make sure that Mandy sends out all the information with the appropriate links for you to participate and put your kind of role in your title in, when you put your name in, when you join the meeting. So we'll make sure Mandy sends you all the relevant information you need.
And we'll plan if we're not attending in the room to have our cameras on.
Yes.
Great. Sounds good. All right, I think we need a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
All right. We are adjourned 8:59 PM. Thank you.